Lord, we just ask you for wisdom, for knowledge, Lord. Lord, we just thank you, Lord, for your Savior, Jesus Christ, Lord. We just keep it all in your name. Amen.
Okay, we'll call a meeting to order. And I think everyone's had their agenda since Friday. On the consent agenda, we've got the minutes of the regular official meeting of June 2nd and the special meeting of June 10th, which certify the election results. So, has everyone read over those? Are there any additions or corrections?
I've read everything pretty good. My connection is...
Commissioner Thursby may most have approved the consent agenda second by Commissioner Macron. Any further discussion? Favor? Opposed? Same sign, Mr. Kerry, four to zero. And that concludes the consent agenda. Now, we will have the swearing-in of our new elected officials. Ray Bo Patterson, Commissioner William Thursby, and Commissioner David Ashbrook. And Judge Tim McFarland's gonna lead the swearing-in process.
All right. This is the first victim, I mean the first.
My wife come up and hold a Bible for us. This is my father's Bible. This is an old Bible. And it makes a lot too many because it wasn't a Christian for many years. But then he came with Christians. He was a great inspiration to me.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, James Ray Patterson, do solemnly swear.
I, James Ray Patterson, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend
That I will support, protect, and defend
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and the government of the United States.
The state of Florida and Gulf County.
The state of Florida and Gulf County.
That I am duly qualified to hold office
That I am duly qualified to hold office
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well
That I will well
And faithfully perform duties
And faithfully perform duties
For the office of mayor
For the office of mayor
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
I, William Thursby, do solemnly swear.
I, William Thursby, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend
That I will support, protect, and defend
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The state of Florida and Gulf County.
The state of Florida and Gulf County.
And that I am duly qualified to hold office
And that I am duly qualified to hold office
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well
And that I will well
And faithfully perform the duties
And faithfully perform the duties
Of the office of city commissioner
Of the office of city commissioner
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Thursby. Bring in Mr. Ashbrook, I believe. See, we have a good helper here. Awesome. All right. Raise your right hand or repeat after me. I, David Ashbrook, do solemnly swear.
I, David Ashbrook, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend
That I will support, protect, and defend
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The state of Florida and Gulf County.
The state of Florida and Gulf County.
And that I am duly qualified to hold office
And that I am duly qualified to hold office
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well
And that I will well
And faithfully perform the duties
And faithfully perform the duties
Of the office of city commissioner
Of the office of city commissioner
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Thursby.
I'd just like to say a couple of words. First of all, give praise to the Lord Jesus Christ, because none of this would be possible without him. I thank my family, my wife, all the support she's given me. Thank all my supporters and my volunteers that worked tirelessly during this campaign for me. And again, I thank you all very much. And we're fixing to conduct this meeting in Port St. Joe's City Commission. And if anyone would like to leave now and go about your daily business, that'll be fine. Or if you'd like to stay, that's fine, too.
This time, we call off. Ms. Gill also will come up.
Thank you. I have two pieces of really, really, really good news. The first piece of good news is, you know, some time ago, we wrote a grant to the Gulf Coast Tourism and Zee Food Fund requesting $125,000 to create a documentary, a professional quality video documentary of the rescue and relocation of Cape San Lass Lighthouse. That grant was approved. The documentary is complete and will premiere here, the world premiere here, on Thursday, July 30th. Methodist Church has kindly offered a facility which gives us all the things we need. It gives us a brand-new digital projector, the screen, the sound system, and the seating that we need at low cost to the city. Charlotte has graciously volunteered to help with this. We will advertise it and we will have it premiered here. And we'll give you more information as we develop it. There'll be a little reception to follow. Now, one thing that we wanted to get out of this was to give more exposure to the city of Port St. Joe. And as a result, we do have a list from our producers, Lisa and Clayton Long, Lisa from Lisa Curry, of film festivals that they intend to enter this. So, we will have exposure. I think maybe some of the greatest exposures since what, I mean, the TDC gives us great exposure. But this is something that I think will give us something completely different and create many people will know where Port St. Joe is, they'll know Dr. Lighthouse, and I think they'll want to come. So, I'm glad it's over. I've seen the documentary. It's fantastic. It's very professional. It's very moving. A lot of you are in it. So, anyway, we're looking forward to that. And that will be July 30th. We're finalizing the tie, but just make sure everyone knows. And we'll be selling tickets at a very reasonable price and hope to see everybody there.
Neil, could you read out a few of the places, the festivals that you're around?
Yes. Miami International Film Festival, Sundance, Nashville, Florida Film Festival, Los Angeles Film Festival, Florida Documentary Film Festival, Orlando, New Orleans, Austin, Savannah, and Atlanta. And I know through my brother's connections, we're also, we will be able to, we'll be insured entrance into some other ones in California.
That's great.
Yeah, of course. It's great.
Yeah.
It's great. Yeah, you'll love it. Now, my second really wonderful piece of news is, I received confirmation today from two different high-level sources that the Port Theater will indeed receive the funding for purchase through the special categories grant. Apparently, the legislature decided how much they would give to this, and it did include us. So, for people to know, to understand, this was a grant that we need to thank the redevelopment agency for on two camps. Number one, they authorized me to write this grant through redevelopment. It was written on behalf of a nonprofit group, the Port Theater Art and Culture Center. And that nonprofit group will own the theater. That group consists of David Warner, Trish Warner, Caravish, Clay Smallwood, Sr., who's really exciting. I forget somebody. Clarence Monet and Natalie Schoeff and Kay Haddock and Jim Haynes and Paul Pickett. And perhaps I didn't forget. Tom, did I forget anyone?
Thanks to Tom, who's been in the background, supporting the whole file.
So, this, what happens with this is that because of this grant and a $35,000 commitment by the redevelopment agency, which is required for matching funds, we will own, someone inside the city will once again own the Port Theater, and we will start a fundraising campaign to renovate and revitalize it. We already have, there's an architect from Pensacola, Carter Kena, who's wonderful at theaters, he's wonderful at historic buildings. And he has offered to take us through conceptual design at low cost. So, this is an effort that's going to happen. And the very best news of all is that we're going into it with no mortgage. Every single penny we raise will go 100% toward the renovation. And at the end of it, we still won't owe anything on the theater. And I think that creates a wonderful opportunity for us to actually operate a culture and art center in the black. It's slated to be a multi-use facility. And anyone who has ideas and money can come forward. We'll be, you know, we'll be needing next week to start a capital campaign and keep everybody apprised of where we're going. What did you say?
I'll fire her.
Okay. All right. Mr. Ballister. Okay. Ten years ago, I was recruited to be executive director of then the DRA, the Downtown Redevelopment Agency that Rex you had a lot to do with. I brought the agency into full compliance with the Florida statute that governs CRAs, and we've kept it there ever since. Over nine years at that time, we developed a committed and talented volunteer board, a board that provided all the professional and technical support needed to address the diversity of planning, project, and administrative administration required. That's an essential element, because this agency is run by one part-time person to do well everything. Since 2006, through the TIF and the grant awards, we've contributed almost $5 million to the downtown area. During that time, we paid our executive directors an average of $51,000 a year. And after those individuals paid their taxes and insurance, that equates to about $38,000 a year salary. That's a good return on investment. The positive results of this agency over the last 10 years have never been in doubt. Last year, the city commissioned by a 3-2 vote abolished the Board of Local Professionals to establish themselves as the governing board of the CRA. The action was led by now Mayor Patterson in an effort to cut out the middleman. While I was hopeful for an effective transition from direct stakeholder representation to a more direct political accountability, that has not been the case. It has gotten so bad, in fact, that I found myself in no position to manage it effectively. And I tendered my resignation last week. I want to express my gratitude to the city staff, especially Charlotte Kinchin and Ethan I will miss working with you. On behalf of all the stakeholders, I want to thank the nine years of volunteer boards who helped build the PS CRA into a thriving agency until this past year, when the so-called middlemen were eliminated. These stakeholders deserve to know why I'm leading this job. At this point, I wanted to emphasize that, Phil. Although you and I have differed on some things, you have always treated me with the utmost professional respect and kindness. And I thank you for that. Rex, it's been both a privilege and a pleasure to work under your direction. While Rex and Neil are well versed in and knowledgeable on CRA law, the very same three who voted it, devoted to make themselves the board, you know, Phil and William and now Mayor Patterson, remain uninformed on how CRA must conduct business. That requirement is by definition as a legal entity, separate, distinct, and independent from the city. For over a year, these same three have refused to participate in training programs to find out what it means to be a CRA director. In one frightening and recent example, just last week, now Mayor Patterson stated that she still doesn't understand how CRA board is different than any other advisory board. The CRA is not an advisory board, but a legal entity. And this makes my point perfectly. To clarify to everyone here who's not well versed in CRAs, how is it different? In a nutshell, Florida statute creates the agency. That is the legal framework. His plans and projects are documented in a very publicly created redevelopment plan. The CRA is not an extension of the city. It's not for city project overruns or general maintenance or anything else not in the plan. This leaves you all in a difficult position. Who precisely are the stakeholders? Who do you represent as a CRA director? To whom should you listen? Your consistent unwavering representation of those who elected you is fine for a city commissioner. However, it is unacceptable as a CRA director. Over and above those who voted for you, your personal preference or opinions of those few who anonymously whisper in your ears as directors, you must represent all stakeholders, including all city and county taxpayers, all downtown businesses, and extending it to North Port St. Joe, and every visitor and consumer of goods and services. The middlemen you cut out are the CRA stakeholders. These present circumstances should be of great concern to all stakeholders. While the county provides 60% of the tax increment funding, they have little to no representation. And the same goes for the businesses who provide most of the abhorrence to the CRA tip. They have little to no representation. And finally, though I've developed a big skin, few self-respecting professionals would continue to subject themselves to what is effectively illegal harassment from now Mayor Patterson. In particular, although I've shared these concerns in writing, there's been no effort to either respond or correct this pervasive hostile working environment. Ray Patterson, now mayor, has wanted to move the CRA out of the CRA district into public works, does not want the executive director to attend city or county meetings, does not want the executive director to attend city staff meetings. This is clearly a punitive attempt to isolate me. Though it is not clear to me how it would be appropriate further, it's entirely unacceptable because I would then have no public access, discussion, or inter-agency coordination. No executive director can even pretend to function reasonably under these circumstances. Ray Patterson, now the mayor, has slandered me and others in public by calling us liars. He's threatened to sue me for libel and slander. He told me, quote, "Anyone can easily do your job without wasting taxpayer dollars." And threatened publicly that he already has my replacement in mind. He also said to me, "I'm not going to take much more of this," which can also be taken as a personal and professional threat. I will leave you all to consider how any of this is appropriate in any public or professional circumstance. Again, the agency's record speaks for itself. I leave you all with a simple, basic choice. If you want a CRA to continue to receive funds from the county and operate it as a separate entity, adhere to Florida statute and represent all stakeholders equitably. I'm going to say that one more time. Represent all stakeholders equitably. In other words, if you want the county's money, do it right, or don't do it at all in the CRA and in the charade. The stakeholders, the so-called those pesky middlemen, according to Mayor Patterson, are the true victims here. Stakeholders, beware. Don't allow your agency to be hijacked, increase your involvement. Be vigilant, attend meetings, speak up, and make your very real influence a better reality. If you all have any questions, please submit them to me writing, because at this point, I don't trust private conversation. But I will certainly respond, and I intend to close out my tenure, as I have done this job all along, to the very best of my ability. But I'm telling you that these hostilities must stop, not only toward me, but to anyone who approaches this podium or voices their opinion in any circumstance. I want to thank the community for the privilege of serving. And wish you all the very best.
You're next.
Mr. Ballster, I think.
Mr. Ballster, next, okay.
Okay, I actually have about three topics covered under that one header. And the CATF had already done its business, so this is actually, we had an advertised public hearing, or, excuse me. You're supposed to have had an advertised public hearing for a second public hearing on a CDPG grant application. We do have pending in your package probably a resolution, authorize a mayor's signature, and the application for this grant cycle. And I also need to do a fair housing workshop. Only one of those that I can accomplish tonight is the fair housing workshop, which I can do fairly expedientiously. But I need to explain, I've been doing this for 11 years now for the city, and most of that time, Charles has been my faithful companion in getting through all the intricacies of the CDPG process and doing a great job. Unbeknownst to us, the Star did not TR advertisement published, so we don't have a legally advertised public hearing. We can be in the public, we're in public eye, probably more people than would ever have normally attended, whenever CDPG hearings are here tonight, but it's not legal. And unfortunately, that puts us back until the next cycle. The paper was, Charles called it paper to find out exactly what happened. We told some interesting stories, but the simple thing is, it did not get published. So, we no longer have the legal framework behind us to proceed with submitting an application next week, which is unfortunate. The same grant is, I guess right now, the paperwork, everything, the surveys are done, the numbers are counted. We're tremendously high on our score. And basically, we're going to wrap it up, package it, and have it ready to go on the next grant cycle. But because of the timing of things, we found, I actually found out last Friday, I was putting the package together, and I know I couldn't get the certified public advertisement stuff in the grant. So, what I usually do is I Xerox a copy of the public advertisement. And I went to look at the Star, because we get subscription to all of our local papers in the region, and it wasn't there. Maybe there's a version that goes out to the mailing list, it doesn't go out to the city. And Jim Anderson looked in the paper he had, and sure enough, it wasn't there. Because he ate the Fair Housing Act, our advertiser was there, but not our public hearing advertiser. The person in the paper apologized, said, "What can we do?" And I said, "Well, other than coming up with $700,000, there's not much you can do." So, I regret to say that we can't pursue the application next week. The next cycle opens, we're normally open in October. If the CDPD people in Tallahassee are on their normal schedule, having not just passed a new rule, this application's closing next week is actually from last October to 2014 cycle. Because of that, we, I don't want to process this resolution, because it mentions the 2014-15 CDPD cycle. We'll have to rewrite it and redo a first public hearing every time that when the next cycle opens. I talked to the CDPD division manager in Tallahassee today and asked him, first of all, confirm that there's no possible way that HUD would allow us to have a valid public hearing and put the application in. And he confirmed that there's no possible way. And then acquired, well, normally open in October, is there any chance of that? He said, "Well, because this one is late, they will be doing their scoring and their awards and their site visits in the early fall of next year." They anticipate December or January is being the news admission date or closing date. So, all I can do is package it, put it on the shelf, redo the front end, redo the public hearings, hopefully for free. They'll advertise for free. I think they should. And then get it processed and submitted next winter. Unfortunately, there is not any legal way to proceed with the grant application now, because they, for whatever reason, did not publish the ad.
You say next winter, I mean, 2016?
Yes, sir. January, December, January's looking like when they're going to have the cycle open again.
What is the Star saying? They give information? I mean, this is...
No, they admitted that they got it.
They just hit bugs.
As far as the lady that we do our ads with, she acknowledged, and they had proof that she received it. They had been out for two days for training, and she was out sick after that, and it was on her desk, but just did not get picked up for publication.
I always think that in the future, we need to use another paper. I mean, Star can't do a simple thing that we need them done. This is tremendous. I mean, you know, we can't get our water system done now on every E, G, and F for another year. I mean, this is sabotage, if you ask me. I think it's a pure sabotage.
Well, I don't know...
I don't know, Tom, it's sabotage.
I've got a question.
Somebody needs to answer this.
What is the, there is no way to get an ad in the News Herald Thursday and have a special meeting?
No, because of the date, when I found out about it Friday, we were already past the date that we could have gotten the advertisement. It would have had to have been in last Thursday's or Wednesday's paper, which would have met the five days prior to tonight. And by then, you know, even if I had had one, if they had, you know, failed to put it in right now, it would have been two days late. This first possible paper could have appeared, and it would have been Saturday, which would not have been the five days prior. And, you know, I probably would have come here just happy that we're ready to go if I hadn't looked and was looking for that to complete the package.
What's the deadline for the application?
The 22nd, next week. So, there was no possible way to get, you know, we had to have had an advertisement by 30 last week, which was the day before I found out that there was no ad. So, we're basically, we're stuck. You know, Jim and I kicked our idea, can't go in the Panama City paper, realized the calendar was just against us, there was no way to get something in the paper and get it published and meet the time. What we can do now, as a failsafe, is to put it in the Panama City paper as well as the local paper at the same time. Certainly, we wouldn't get any response to the public hearing by advertising in the Panama City paper, but you do satisfy the legal requirement. So, we will, probably that'll be our fallback. What we've been doing for 10 years, has been working for 10 years, it did not work this time, and it's a human error, the paper's part. But we just do not have an opportunity to put an application this year. And there's not much that can be done about it until, except package it and re-advertise.
As I say again, we don't need to look stuff using the Star, not using the Star. They don't use the Star. They've had the same kind of problems. And they've put all their evidence in the newspaper. And I think this is very bad. And I think Star should be held responsible. These people are depending on their water line getting fixed this year, what this is going through. And then we can't, because they just forgot to publish it? I mean, tell me that's...
That's extremely...
And you'll see me getting real hard on somebody. The Star is, you can see it, they're causing lots of people to have to fill it with dirty pipes for all another year. And it's not fair to those people. And I am very upset about it. This man, this lady.
I don't think you should get that upset, only because I think, like you say, it is sabotage.
It is.
Because it's in the black community. And that's just the bottom line there.
Right, that's who's affected by this, the black community. Everybody else on this ought to have had their water line fixed.
Long time ago.
Exactly.
I still get brown water. I live on Bonnie, man, I still get brown water.
Well, I don't say you don't ever get brown water. I won't say that if you don't get like you used to. Don't get it like you used to. I guarantee you that. Anyway, I apologize to everybody for this misunderstanding they're calling. Where's Star wrong? I think something should be done, maybe illegal actions. This affects a lot of people.
I appreciate your position. It was, I was crushed. Probably I had a, like, worst experience in my life. Anyway, one thing I can do is requirement for the application, as already publicly noticed in the Star, is the fair housing workshop of the elected officials, which is you guys. And I handed out another one of our fact sheets. And I know most of you know these things by heart by now. But in the Fair Housing Act, basically, you're not allowed to discriminate against anybody to rent or refuse housing, refuse to negotiate housing, make housing available, deny dwelling, set different terms or different conditions or pledge for sale or rental of a dwelling, provide different housing services or facilities, falsely deny that housing is available for inspection, sale, rental, or profit, persuade owners to sell or rent, or deny anyone access or membership in a facility or service such as multiple listing services related to sale services of housing. The same prohibitions occur in the financing of housing. There are pages and pages and pages of documents, but the simple list is that none of these actions can be based on race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, or handicap. There are few circumstances for owner-occupied dwellings or multiple family groups that are four or less, if you have a quadruplex or less, and you own one of them, you can dictate who rents or one or the other dwelling that you share. But for more than four, pretty much have to satisfy all those rules. And sometimes, you know, people have been found guilty of practices, and especially in the real estate profession, where they'll self-select clients based on what they think they hear on the phone. They hear Hispanic accent or African-American accent, they know they're looking for a certain crowd, might not say that there's anything available. They've got an ad in the paper for rent, and they don't like it, it's on the other side, not deny it, or having the person make an, give them an opportunity to make an application. I can go into a lot of greater detail, but you have a lot of business on your stats tonight. I have a publication called Fair Housing for Small Communities, which I will have delivered to each of your offices at City Hall. And it's a very simple guide, but it's pretty conclusive, and it goes through the major things you have to think about in terms of... things you have to think about in terms of also making your public facilities accessible. One of the things we'll also have to go through this grant cycle is update your ADA accessibility plan, which isn't that hard to be, took care of most of the deficiencies two years ago when they made corrections to City Hall. In fact, this is ranked with the front door here, and the correction's over at the Centennial Building. That's just about it. If you have any questions on Fair Housing Law, give me a call, and I'll refer somebody who knows. And I can't be sorrier about the outcome with the newspaper ad.
Well, tell us the schedule on the next cycle, where you get it.
Roger Daughtry is the proper manager, CEO of Tallahassee. Called him briefly today to ask, and he said that he is looking at putting out the note for, the notice of finding availability in November, early December, and having the cycle open in January. As it is now, I've got the various types of things I've been compiling for several weeks, and binder's ready. Go ahead and package, and all I have to really do come next winter is make the first public hearing. I think our CADF meeting is already, is valid. It has that. Go ahead and advertise the first public hearing, second public hearing a month later, and submit it. They'll have to do a resolution referencing the new grant cycle, the 2016-2015 grant cycle, and go from there.
So Bruce won't be the earliest, the week his, his story on doing the work?
Probably the summer of '16. We went through, if they have their application cycle in January, it will close by the end of February. They would make their awards in April or May, March or April, and then we have to do a little bit of additional work to get our, uh, column. Contractors hired. I can go ahead and probably put some time in on the environmental review, the environmental report, it's another considerable body of work, but nothing changes in our course in COVID. It's gonna be substantially different. So that process can be done, and have it all wrapped, packaged, and ready. I think there's no chance that we won't get an award, because the score is just so high due to demographics in that neighborhood. When you say, you know, how many lower bottom income people you're gonna sell, you're top of the list, you know, how many low moderate income households, top of the list, maximum percentage category. So I think we're in good shape on score, just a matter of being strictly legal.
Bruce, I tell you about, not just the pig lab in the lake, but I'm sure there were companies that were, okay, getting ready to be on that project, that's not gonna be able to do that work this year.
Sure. Well, we had the same, you know, problem last year. We ended up coupling the first phase with the USDA grant, and USDA took so long, it was money, we couldn't do it right over again. This thing shouldn't have taken more than five months of construction.
Bruce, next time you have such bad news, could you come at the end of the meeting? I'm completely demoralized.
I'm sorry.
I mean, I just took breath out of this, and I'm not one to pin it to anybody that does a bad six or seven.
Well, I just sort of hope I never had that bad news presented again.
If so, tell them the end of the meeting.
Sure enough.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we signed it. The ordinance on the overnight parking, your ERV has looked at it, it will be on your agenda at the next meeting for per-reading and, you know, input and discussion. And let me ask questions, that's the only thing I...
Anybody have any questions? Jim?
Yes, sir, Mayor. The first thing I have is a reference to the government's hospital sites. Staff plans to wrap it up this week as far as site prep, we need to bring in some more dirt, and we're gonna turn it over to our engineers for surveying work, so, plenty of the next one, turn it over to the engineer. Any questions about that?
Jim, we're talking about doing some seal bills. Could we go ahead and get everything set for advertisement, but as soon as that's done, we can go ahead and get this thing?
We have a draft of the advertisement that's pretty much ready to go. We will need to talk about what kind of deed restrictions we want to put in there, size of building, height of building, those kind of things. Is Clay here?
Yeah.
How long does it go, thank you?
A couple weeks, I wonder if that...
Okay, so...
Think about that next meeting.
So we're talking about having a workshop to go over some of the covenants and restrictions.
You look through some of that stuff?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Some of it's more strict than probably than we want it to be.
We don't, I don't think so, I was just...
Yeah, but I'd like to see us have a workshop at some point in time, maybe before next meeting. But we're, are we at the point of being July or August before we can do the advertisement and all that, based on what Clay said?
Well, we gotta, Clay has to finish. Planning Development Review Board has got to look at it. We have to go through the planning process, and my advice would be that y'all have to approve the plan before we start advertising. And so that's gonna be, oh, sixty days?
Yeah, just whatever we can do to speed this thing up. Anything, if we need special meetings, Tom, or whatever, if you'll call Jim and say, "Listen, guys, if we go ahead and approve this, let's get it going, because we're gonna go into winter time instead of, this is the selling season." We gotta get it out there.
Y'all do the elevation certificate first.
How are you looking on?
I keep thinking about deed restrictions on there, if you give me those, I can start compiling those, three quarters of a decade, we can get at it, it's all that we can, that 'll be discussed.
Okay.
The next item we have is a reference to affordable housing. A set of plans has been submitted to the building department. Staff is planning to look at those tomorrow as well. The plan is to get it to the Planning Development Board on July the 14th, for them to consider a recommendation to the city commission, and for the city commission to look at on July the 21st for development owners. If you want to go by, take a look at them, the building department's staff is going to look at them tomorrow as well. Next item we have is a reference to the flushing program. Should be wrapping up this week. We're going through the beaches headed towards Overstreet. That will be completed this week, so we'll have everything flushed from all the way through town, all the way through the distribution system. Next item we have is a reference to July 4th. Your fireworks have been ordered. The schedule is for 10 o'clock. We will utilize the old mill site, so everything is ready to go for July 4th fireworks. The next item we reference July 4th is the street dance. I have been in contact with County Commissioner Sandy Quinn for your approval tonight. There is a special permit that is required whenever we close this street. I want him to say it would be the same setup as been in the last previous years. Mr. Quinn, we'll be in charge. We will sit down and grove all the details. Recommendation is to approve the permit from Mr. Quinn and move forward on the...
Well, we're motion, a commission approved, it's second by Commissioner Barea. Any other discussion, anything? All good, all in favor? Close, motion passes 5-0.
The next item we have is a reference to the summer youth programs. Both programs are beginning. We started the stack houses last week. The program through the workforce board started last week, so we've got children that went in ten programs. We have two in town, both of them are very good programs.
I'd just like to also thank all the people, all the hard work they do, and to be sure that we have a summer program. The girls at the stack house, Ms. Joanne White, Ms. Leitha. Just, a lot goes into that, and it's for our children of our community, and I just want to thank everyone.
One thing we do have a need for is a few sofas, couches, if somebody has some that they would like to donate, we could be in need of a couple of those at the stack house, a few of those need to be disposed of.
Anybody got a youth sofa they need at the stack house?
Look on Facebook, St. Joe Yard, they on there every day. I mean, they look good on, on the bike, but I'm not sure if I got you.
Ms. Charlotte, would you look on St. Joe's Facebook next week, yard sale?
See, I want.
I mean, they look good on, on the bike, but I'm not sure if I got you.
Thank you.
The next item we have is a reference to the city budget. City staff is, is just about finalized our portion of the budget staff to get it to the city commission. We're waiting on the revenue numbers to come in from the state of Florida, and also through the tax collector, property appraisal. That should be coming out first week in July, so we will start our first budget meeting more likely the first of July, when we get that out to youth, that way you've got plenty of time to review it and sit down with each one of our departments. Last item I have under our old business is yard debris lay down yard. We've been trying for a few weeks to set up a meeting in reference to possibly utilizing a company that can chip up their debris, save some activity fees. That will take place tomorrow. We're also gonna go and look at some proposed sites to be able to utilize that, so stay tuned. We'll try to get some information next couple of days, see what our...
You're gonna meet with someone tomorrow?
Yes, sir. We have someone coming in tomorrow morning, nine o'clock.
So Field Dreams Land out there is not an option for us?
No, I think it is.
You're helping the chairman.
Yeah, we have a contract that's doing similar work in other locations. We're gonna see if they're interested in City of Port Saint Joe, see if we can get any type of proposal to you.
Thank you.
John, what do we, what's off the top of your head? Our tonnage for yard debris to the landfill or compact or whatever, call it now?
It's been a few years since we've put the number together, but historically, several years ago, it was in the upwards of 1500 ton.
And we get charged 55...
Fifty-one, fifty, yeah. And it looks like we'll probably be about $100,000 in tipping fees, based on the current year-to-date usage.
Could be a substantial savings.
New business, utility rate study review proposal, following up with city budget. There's been some discussion as to what we want to do with our rates this year. You're in the fifth year of your current ordinance is in place for utility rates, so we did put money in the budget this past year for you consideration, if you want to bring in Burton and Associates, you did your original rate study that you're following now with your current rates. It's there for your consideration on that, if you want to move forward with getting a little bit of a rate.
What did we budget, Jim?
We budgeted $14,300.
They were 14,000, am I correct?
They did, we talked to them, they said they would match what you have in the budget.
We really need to get them out here to see how we're doing. Might be done better than we think, and we're able to either keep them stable or maybe lower them a little bit, so I like...
Well, any other options?
For...
Somebody else to do the rate study, like, maybe Roberson, can he possibly do it?
I'm sure he's got...
You can...
How about you, what's the other municipality doing for our impact fees on the...
There's several different scales people are using. Some, some are way having more on commercial, some way more having on residential. There's, there's a wide range of different models out there.
I'd say put that out for bid, but I would like for it to be another company like this one, that this is solely in the water business type, you know, that other municipalities, is there more than just this one company?
Here's a few I'd like to... My only concern about going out for bid is that you'd have to go through and, and the new company would have to do a complete rate study, where this company already has done the complete rate study, which was, it was more than 14,000 for that original rate study. I don't remember.
Well, it's only 4,000.
And so, so basically, they have us, they have our history, they know our situation, and they're just loading and updating the data, looking at our forecast that we currently have out there. They understand our situation. We certainly can go out for bid, but it's gonna cost us significantly more, because they'd have to do a complete rate study.
I guess my next question on that, wouldn't it be better for us to wait until our numbers from the tax office and stuff come in, to let's just see where we're at? Or is there something we need to be proactive on, go ahead and get them in? I mean, there might be a chance that once all the numbers come in, that we don't have to do anything.
Well, this will be based on your utility rates, your water and sewer rates. Like now, in the budget, right now, it would, it'll certainly go up off every one. If you wanna, if you wanna have time to bid and consider what a recommendation was, because in order to change your utility rate, it takes a month. It's not like the standard orders, where you can advertise in 10 days, you have a 30-day wait period. So there's a longer window you have to do if you want to change your utility rate.
You know, I guess the way I feel about it, I don't know how y'all feel about it. I hate giving these people $14,000 just to do a study for us, but I also am very much against going up on the water bills, and this is the only way that we would know if we're gonna be okay, or where we stand at, then I think we're gonna have to do the dust.
Well, they also look at the impact fee, like me just talking about...
We did have that conversation with them, Mike, didn't they say that they would look at it?
Yes, he would review. Absolutely, and, and he said he would take the guidance from us on both rates, and when there we need to go, and on the impact fees, and look at what's out there, and, and give us some guidance on adjusting those fees as well. But I would agree, the only way to have certainty that we have the coverage we need for the next five, five years is, is to bring these guys in and, and look at the numbers and, and review, and try to make an informed decision.
And we've already got an ordinance in place, we don't do anything, we've already got an ordinance in place that sets the rates that come in here, and they're gonna go up automatically by ordinance if, if we, if we do this and find we might do something else, not only helps budgetary process, but it's gonna possibly give us a chance to either stabilize them or lower them.
If we got it in the budget, I'll make a motion, we're gonna... Well, I'll motion, I finished my cross, I could, I could miss it further. Can you go to the discussion?
Discussion. Jim?
Yes, sir.
Am I right in saying that if there is a possibility that if we get this study done, it could come back with a suggestion that we may have to go up even more?
Is that a possibility?
So that's something we have to consider, are we gonna go with, you know, what they, what they recommend, or we wasted our money if they come back with a 4.5% increase, are we gonna ignore that anyway?
Well, I would say that, that's true, that they could take a look, but we do have other resources that we could put to bear that we haven't included in previous rate studies. A quarter million dollars that we have BP funds warrant, and, and there are other assets that we've not included in the rate study, because we're trying to hold our reserves. And that's certainly part of the rate study, is to build reserves. But we have, over the last two rate studies, we have lowered rates. We went from eight to three last time, because we were creative with, with our impact fee usage, applying those into the rate study that we had done previously. So I certainly think, you know, we, we can do everything we can. Numbers, the numbers are close on the rate study. We may be a little too aggressive on some of our forecasting, but, but...
I think we've got to do it, you know, especially on the impact fees. We're killing our business growth, I tell you.
Well, the biggest thing is you've got the debt service. If you didn't have all the debt service, we could come up with some rates, and only, only fault we would have is if we didn't make our projections for the budget next year. But with the large debt service that we have, to make sure we have that coverage on there, these folks look at us though. So that's, that's...
All in favor of mission?
Aye.
Mr. Perez, pile up.
The next item we have is a reference to the League of Cities Annual Conference. We put a copy in each of your boxes, coming up on August the 13th through 15th, at the World Center Marriott in Orlando. If anybody wants to attend that, let us know, and we'll try to get people signed up.
I think we definitely ought to send someone. I went once, 2011, 2011 time I went, and it's very important to, you know, and I would like to go as mayor, because when I was there in 2011, it brought up me, the city of Saint Joe, we've not sent a mayor in like 18 years, and they won't know why we can't send a mayor to these competitions. Especially, we depend on the League of Cities for a lot of stuff, it's out in a lot of things, so I would like to go, and I don't know about anybody else.
You know, we discussed it a while back, because we were tight on our budget, and I think we discussed that, that we all agreed that we should send one representative every year, but I, I kinda hesitate to open up all of it, because it just, it costs, it costs the city a lot of money, and the tax dollars, of course, so I, I'd like to see us send, send a representative, I would have a problem with mayor going, but...
I'd like to see us send the mayor and commissioner, but I'm not against us bearing the extent ourselves on some of this stuff either.
How do we normally reimburse, we reimburse by state rate, or just by extensive statements?
We do by state rate on there. We have, it's actually personal matters, how much you get from every day, the food allowances on there. The mileage is followed on the state guidelines there, and we usually pay for hotel and for the costs. If you drive your own vehicle, you get the mileage back if you took a city vehicle, you just pay for that.
Do you know how much it costs last time, too, as we were in town?
I don't know, I can look it up.
You know, we gotta, we're not gonna do anything right this summer, next meeting still be kind of your talent.
Yeah, I'm not saying I, I got to go, like, just let us send the mayor and the commissioner. It doesn't have to be me.
Get those numbers forward, we can look at it.
All right, then last three items I have on there, Mayor Patterson wanted to talk to you, John, I'll turn it to you.
First thing, 20th Street stop sign. I've talked to people, we had a resident on that street, bring it up, that they, we don't have any stop sign between, when you come up along Avenue on 20th Street, the next stop sign is down Morgan Avenue, just before you get to the Faith Christian School. This particular person, I think people get too fast down that street, it was brought up about maybe speed bumps. I talked to three or four different residents on that street, one of them did not like street bump, road, you know, it bumps in the road, 'cause they damaged the cars, and I said, what are they doing? Speeding, and they deserve to get their car damaged maybe. But this guy said, we don't have any children actually live on that street, I don't think, but it was looking upon, and the chief was, oh, we rode around one day, looking at it, and we were gonna get with someone that lives right there at corner Cypress, and see if they had a problem with their stop sign. Now, I have had one gentleman tell me, he didn't think we ought to put a stop sign there, he thought we ought to put speed bumps in the road. Or we ought to put a city policeman there twenty-four hours a day and write some tickets, and that's the one it's dancing. So we're gonna look at that a little more before we make any final decision, and we'll talk about it and bring it up at the next meeting, and see if you and John, y'all still looking at it. I personally think the speed limit is too high in the city. You got three or four streets, it's thirty miles per hour going down a residential road. That's Long Avenue, Garrison Avenue, Monument Avenue, and one other one, and first street. That's just too fast, in my opinion, you know. I think if you have a child going out in the street at thirty miles per hour, you're gonna have a hard time stopping. Some of the roads do have lots of children on them, and so, you know, we'll just look at it later and see exactly what we need to come up with. Yes, sir.
Well, Bo, you have a policeman who is sitting at Catholic church, or down by the lake, or the other lake, and, you know, on a regular basis, I see him three, four, five times a week, and I have never seen anybody stop, so we have radar, you can solve some of that problem right quick.
Well, we don't want to be a city that just writes tickets. I mean, we'd rather not do that, but if we have to, then we have to.
Well, if you do it one, two times more, and get that...
You want to stop the speeding, or you want to let it go on?
I don't want to stop it.
But you don't stop no wrong horse straight along Long Avenue.
Right.
I've been complaining about that for four years, and it's just as bad today, and I was told that I often get that thing at six o'clock. What does he do at ten, twelve, two, or four, when the traffic gets bad? I've seen the previous mayor making U-turns in the street over there, going, "Hey, next around and run the stop sign." But I guess that's not right, if the mayor wants to run this legal.
Who ran?
The mayor, me.
Oh, not this mayor, then?
Me, you both seen that, I'm setting it for the night.
It wasn't me, though, right?
And that one right there told me that they took the stop sign down when I cornered the man, I said, what's them red men from top that post? 'Cause he told me they took them down, didn't they?
To what now?
The stop sign.
Where?
At fourth and Long.
I love that.
But they didn't.
Chief, that's one of the... We're looking at all of them, we certainly will, but we want to be safe around town, we don't want anybody getting hurt, and we do need to slow down if you please yourself a little bit.
But I think if you just put a four-way stop at Cypress, you'd beat the first, because the next one's Forest Park. You got the walking trail comes across there, you got all them youngins riding the bicycle on the edge of the road to get there to fish. If you don't put one there, ain't no good putting one at Cypress.
Right, so you think we should put one at Forest, if we're gonna put stop signs?
No problem.
Put one there?
The red man stopped twice, he saved a case.
Oh, you're right. Well, it takes the same lives, you know?
The red man stopped twice, it don't hurt.
Right, I agree. Chief, you look in there a little more?
It's a force of course.
Everybody remembers that step up to the podium and tell Miss Charlotte their names. Luckily, Miss Charlotte, I think, knows the ones that are speaking, but she's gonna be in trouble, she takes some minutes over here, but I think...
And this side, it was, it's a best-in-bridge between Eighteenth and Nineteenth Street that some people used. It was brought to my attention by a resident that it was in bad shape. Well, I brought it to John's attention, and John, what'd you come up with?
It isn't bad shape. You know, the only, I don't have a solution for repairing that bridge, I mean, it was constructed so long ago, a lot of materials, I think, probably came from the paper mill at the time. The only solution I could present right now to the board would be for its removal at some point in future, we look at, if we want to put it back or not.
What is the reasoning for that bridge, John?
I have no idea. The problem was, I'm low to mark, I mean, it was crossing a ditch, obviously, but why it was put there, to, you know, citizen action involvement, I really don't know.
I mean, is there something that those utilized a lot, I don't know. I have a rich off that little bridge.
I want to go up that bridge, I'm a little boy.
Did we remove it, did you take the hair part out?
No, no. John, is it high beams, is it a structure, or is it a...
It's the bank and the head walls, and it's just, you know, it's collapsed eventually. I would give the bank. The recommendation was to remove it, it's the only solution I have to develop at this point.
Do you want to take any action tonight, or do you want to wait and discuss this more in the next meeting?
It has to be called there now.
It's, yeah, we have it barricaded off, but I don't think, you should be walking across it if you were in the Democratic Party.
Motion to remove the bridge.
We have a motion, by Commissioner Ashbrook, second by Commissioner Mazet, any discussion? Anybody in the audience who want to discuss on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's pass it by zero. So the issue is, some of you may know, some of you may not know, a while back, we made utility write-off policy. We had people that was having legitimate, we didn't find that you paid for all the water. And I still feel that's the case, but I feel like some people are taking advantage of it. You know, I thought when we made it clear that the only way you could get reimbursed for any type of water leakage is if you had a certified plumber come to your house and fix the leak, and tell us that, yes, this person did have a leak, you know, and that's not happening, right, Jim?
Yes, sir, the current policy in place does not require a certified plumber as a...
Jim, is there anybody over the past, let's say, six months, I want a copy of everybody that we've given up that has used this utility write-off policy? I want a copy of the last six months, the ones that have had it, and I want their names, too.
Yeah, I would like to see a copy of who exactly it was applied for, how much money we spent on it, 'cause I think it's a good plan, but I think it can be misused, and we just need to tighten it down, put some teeth in it.
Well, let's go ahead, too, and make the motion tonight, and I'll make the motion that it has to be by a licensed plumber. Can we just change the writing in that gym to have Tom do it? He's not doing it for a reason.
We have a motion on the floor, by Commissioner Thursday, if you have a second?
Second.
Second one? Second, by Commissioner Crone, yes, sir. Come up to the podium if you would, tell us your name. We just need your name for the record.
Okay, my name is Robert Form, Jr. I'm a graduate from nineteen seventy-six, went to University of Southern Mississippi, joined the United States Army. You are trained all the way, and went down there and came back, I'm back on. I love my little city, I miss some of the people who was part of it, Coach Taylor, Coach Wood, all them. But I was just listening when you were saying about the plumber and stuff, I'm always thinking about being consistent, and I'm always thinking about saving, what can we do to make it better for, not just the city, for everybody? When you were talking about get a professional plumber, right? And I'm not saying that I don't trust anybody, but if we get somebody that we know that we trust is consistent, and so if they go out there and check it, if it is a leak, I think that, you know, we take the responsibility, but if it's not a leak, let them take the responsibility. So then, it'd be consistent, it won't be nobody that, who you get, who you know, who's in the clique, and all that kind of crap. Excuse my language, that's military talk, excuse me on that, but just keeping it real.
He's got a good point, because you may have someone that's had trouble paying their water bill to start with, but not, when they don't have a leak, now you ask them to spend a minimum of a hundred dollars to get a plumber to come in there, to write a note, to give the city that, yes, Robert had a leak, and he had a legitimate leak, and we're gonna turn it in so we can get, you know, the best write-off he gets, so I... You need to think about that a little bit, because you're basically going to somewhat for the tax, you're gonna fuck with the leaks by making them get a certified plumber.
Robert, originally, there was no policy. If you had a leak, you paid for it, you, there was no recourse at all, and that's why we put it in first place. And some other commissioners were hard against us for doing that.
Well, Mr. President, anybody imagine, buddy, matter to that thing, several times have gotten us about to change our minds on it.
Well, that's...
I mean, we're spending a lot of money.
I mean, you know, well, now we're saying, oh, you're...
Well, I'm just giving you my strength for being working with the corporate office and everything, right? And our whole thing was making sure that we be consistent with what we do, not the filibuster, not the hand game, and when you being consistent, right, that means everybody gonna be on one accord. If you're not consistent, then somebody playing cards, then somebody getting owed, it's not fair for everybody. So the point is, if you're worried about the money and all this, well, if you be consistent, you have to worry about the money, because I guarantee you won't have that issue, you can nip it right in the bucket. We always say, free the core, leave by example, all right, leave by example.
And I think we monitor it a little more. There you go. Maybe it's not been monitored like it should, I mean, you know, we just pay it in us commissioners, somebody's complaining, oh, we're writing off a hundred thousand dollars, y'all policy you made, you know, to make us look bad, 'cause they think we're responsible for all the write-offs.
I mean, I've been in the store and I've seen it counted, the same thing. Oh, y'all got a pretty good job, I mean, what?
There's a whole group of women sitting here dying.
But you ain't gonna sell it, you know, you're not gonna certify everybody that losing the crop, right? So the point is, is that if we could just show leadership and say, hey, this is how we're gonna do it, and we're gonna commit ourselves to do it, and by leave by example, sending after them, then we gotta do it. I mean, 'cause I say it be fair to all parties, what I mean, I mean when I say that for everybody. So I guarantee you, when they start talking about, hey, I got a leak, I got whatever, they gonna think about it, because somebody done got caught with it, and then you got a problem that's consistent, because just what, he's under your watch, so he's not getting half of the check neither. I'm just giving you my point, from the city, boy, I'm just glad to be back in my hometown, Fort St. Joe.
Thank you, Ron. All right. John, let's draw my motion right now on this, and let's look at it, and Jim, when do you think I could get that? Can I hit that next up today, this day? Let's look at it next meeting and discuss it, because I mean, I'm all for the, I'm all for the write-off. I'm the one that threw it up, I'm the one that championed it with the support of Bill and Bo on it, and we've helped a lot of people. I had a man call me a while back, he was in the nursing home, had a four thousand dollar bill, he'd been paying on, got there, quarter was cut off. Being that we took that new policy, he was able to get it fixed, and paid two hundred dollars or a hundred and sixty-something dollars to get it done. This man was on his deathbed, and he had already set up on payments to make the payments up to four thousand dollars for water bill, for three thousand something. I have no apology to make for that, and I think in the past, what we were doing, we were actually bugging police. So let's just hold off all the, draw my motion up, John.
All right, Jim, you'll get us all a copy of who we wrote off in the last six months, and it was, the amount of money we wrote off, of course.
Jim, just a, just a third part, real quick, are we writing off sewer side and the water side of the bill?
Sewer side is something that's normal for most all municipalities across the state, because if you have a leak, you didn't get it run through the sewer system. So the sewer is always, is an anomaly for most of states.
We're also writing the water side.
Yes, the water was what was brought into this big policy, this is what I...
Hi, John. Mr. Mayor, I have nothing tonight, just a few questions for the...
Larry?
Mr. Mayor, we're gonna have a report tonight, but I would like to invite our new commissioner, Commissioner Ashbrook, to check out the water facility we have. At any time you're ready, just give me a call, I'll give you my number, wrap it up.
And I would charge all of the city commissioners to go out there and look, Larry's been on me a lot to come out and look, I finally went, and it was very educational. I found out a lot of things, and with this line system, with big stuff running through the system, I think everybody needs to know and understand what it's gonna do for our water. It's gonna help our water tremendously, so I encourage everyone to go out there and just spend thirty minutes with Larry, let him take you through, show you things that's important, I think you'll come away very...
And I do appreciate it.
Yes, sir. I told you, I'll be back.
Yeah, if you have any questions, all right.
Mr. Liam?
Since you're here tonight, I probably didn't think six o'clock news, but evidently, I'm on it. I was interviewed by Channel Seven today about the O problem that we're having at the plant. We've had quite a few complaints, I understand their pain, it's very noxious. I tried to explain to the girl in a way that, you know, she would understand what was going on, she took pictures, and I brought some pictures for y'all to see tonight, in case y'all want to look, see what it looks like. If you want to know what it smells like, just drive over the Highland View Bridge and roll down your windows, when the wind's blowing that way, it's very bad. And we are looking at solutions, I've got some magazine articles here, and some proposals for solutions. We had intended to propose it for the next budget year, but I don't know that the people in Highland View want to go through the whole summer having these events, so we might want to, on a staff level, discuss what our options are, and then bring it back to you at the next meeting. But it is a problem, and it's just gonna continue to get worse if we don't come up with a solution for it, so...
Ms. Lynn, I would like to see you, if it's staff, and let's see what kind of dollar figures it's gonna take for the leak, and maybe expedite the situation in my phone. The last time, bring off the hood, I know other commissioners are...
I've had several calls, DEP has called me because they pay the claims, I talked to them.
There's nothing we're attempting to do to anybody, I feel sorry for the people, but I also, I'm just, I think we're not gonna...
We've got to come up with a solution, it's gonna cost us some money.
It is.
But we're not gonna hope to get a dry solution right now, but we're...
Yes, yes, I think we have a good solution. I've got three different articles here on the technology, I think it's very sound technology, and it's actually the most economical solution that we have. I've got numbers from two hundred thousand dollars to, you know, thirty-five thousand.
I pay it supportive enough, as soon as you can get those numbers together, you'll call Jim, I will set up a workshop, that's that day.
I've got it right here with me.
Liam, is that the disruptors you're talking about? That is the disruptor?
The science disruptors, there's three different articles that I brought tonight, I'll give them to Jim, he can make copies of them and share it, if all you can read it. The technology sound, it's been used in Europe and Australia for several, several years now. There's actually some, I think, two or three different sites here in the US that are using it in water reservoirs, Lake Erie. Y'all heard on the news last year the problems they have with their water system. It works for them, it should work for us, and actually, it's the most economical solution, and I think it's our best solution. Everything else is really expensive, and they want us to put in all kind of electrical stuff, it's just gonna cost us a huge electric bill and everything like that, so... We've really researched this, we've been looking at it for a little over a year, and I think it's a good solution.
Let us get that back to work.
I'll give the information to Jim, and let him make copies and provide it with you.
Guys, everybody, we're kind of just putting on a little workshop.
Glad to have a workshop, and share all kind of information.
Liam, I encourage everyone to continue calling DEP, because DEP is what guys in this mess start with. We had spent seven million dollars on the spray field. The upside of that is we're not sending treated wastewater into the ends of our bay.
That's part of the problem.
You know, and that's a good thing, but when we changed the way we treated our wastewater, and spent seven million dollars to do it, now we've got this problem, that's more money.
That's part of the problem, it's not the complete problem.
Right.
The complete problem is about the time that the new system, spray field and all that went online, Arizona had been down long enough that all of those chemicals and stuff from Arizona, and the paper mill, finally left that, you know? There's like a four-hundred or five-hundred day detention time in that midden. We had no nutrients at that time, it was a nutrient deficit system, because it was diluted, all that domestic sewage was diluted in industrial waste. Now, it's all domestic sewage, and there's lots of nutrients there, so those nutrients support the algae blooms. Plus, the low flow going through the system, sunshine, warm weather, it's a perfect breeding ground for it, and so we've seen it just steadily get worse and worse each summer. And, you know, we're taking every step we can, we turned on extra aerators, it's costing us more in electrical cost. We put chemicals in it last year, and that didn't work, that was expensive, you know, we're trying to lower the level right now to get rid of some of the algae, but we're limited by how much the spray deals can take each day, plus we had a lot of rain last week, we lost several days of spraying time. It's a very complex problem, but I think we've come up with a pretty good solution now. Glad to share the workshop, get more details about it at that time. I'll give Jim all this information. And the other thing is, we're still waiting on price from a couple of the companies on the repairs to the Evolent pipe. Two of the companies have not responded at all, we called us and emailed, we haven't heard anything, but we're supposed to get something this week from one of the companies who priced all those repairs. Other than that, any questions?
Please, ma'am. Clay? Oh, time, right? Come up to the podium, please, ma'am.
Joanna Ryan, Gulf County Commissioner, and I'm here on behalf of the residents of Highland View, and I also have received numerous calls, and I would like to encourage you to please prioritize this and the folks in Highland View, it's not that they don't want to, they can't continue to go through this, it is unbearable, they can't come out of their homes.
I brought this up two months ago, and we proactive on this, whatever we could.
I also, I have been in contact with DEP, and I spoke with Bill Evans, who's over this area, and he was not aware of the odor issues resulting from the algae blooms, and I think that we need to coordinate better with DEP and come to a solution together. All right, thank you, anything I can do to help, please let me on.
I did contact Josie Penn with the County City Branch Office several weeks ago about the particular problems and some other things that we're going through, and I spoke with Mark Summers last night about the...
He did say he was going to contact Josie, and I thought...
Does DEP have any opportunities like Northwest Florida Water Management that we might could get some help momentarily?
I know they have some grant ones, but they're...
This would be a perfect example of somewhere that could... This would be a perfect example of somewhere they could spend some of.
I wonder if the SRF or something else, because the SRF money to indeed be revolving for, we'd be getting sixty-five percent grant, thirty-five percent match city funds, so. We do make phone calls.
Yes, we do. It's terrible. We have to do that. Uh. Mr. Clay?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have everything. Is there a question?
Question for Clay? Thank you. Please, Paul.
Mayor, I don't have anything unless you have questions for me.
I just wish you'd look in those feeding issues, see what's in the recording.
We will.
We got to write tickets. We want to write tickets. I guess, I would say, we don't want to be known as a town that just votes tickets, but.
We need to be sure that we know what we're asking for.
Well, and you know, that's the opinion and I'll agree with that, but I can remember the day, living on the border, St. Joe, where some of these guys were running up and down these streets wide open like, because they watched the cops on Friday night and they got that surge, genuine that out there just going crazy. That's not what we're talking about. I mean, I don't think it hurt the right of wanting to get birds instead of birds.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, the only thing we did find out today, Ms. Austinbrook mentioned that the theater was funded for the money to help purchase. The lighthouse was rank number thirty-five. They funded through number thirty-two. So right now there's five hundred and seventy-five thousand difference in what they're funding. So I don't know if we make a few phone calls and maybe some of the projects won't get all the money, but we're extremely close. And if you know anyone that could help us.
Okay.
Luckily, the theater is kicking us out.
No, I'm not saying that, sir. That's all for.
Okay. Uh, anybody, any citizens who should be heard on any matter? Anybody? Just sort of closing the voting, Mr. Clay.
I'm David Mossoff. I grew up here. Was it, I thought he was in a Y class. Passed away a few years ago. And I'm older than most everybody else sitting here. Okay. I have a little, I pass these around. If y'all want to look at these, I know we've spent some money down on the docks here, uh, sit here recently. Uh, and I have been a plant manager, uh, for thirty-five plus years, over five hundred people, supporting a twenty, a two hundred million dollar self-force. So also the things that you're going through today, uh, you know, a budget and things, I've been experienced in that. First, I know his father real well. Uh, I know that, uh, I, I talked to a couple of people today and they say, well, the docks, uh, people were running, or they running to the docks. Well, the only, okay, let me ask a question. How many from here around there to watch the boat in the last two weeks? Two months? One? What size boat?
Uh, twenty-one.
Twenty-one foot. Bill has about a twenty-six foot.
A nineteen.
Nineteen, okay, okay. I see Phil down there, rest of it, I don't see any. Okay, well, your docks are built, you don't have to step down. Okay, now those pictures were taken when you still had about eight inches high to go out. Boats going, the smaller boats you saw, fourteen, seventeen, eighteen foot boats can go under the dock. You can keep those, I have some more. Uh, they can go under the dock. Also, uh, there are not one or two people can get in a boat when the tide is out without difficulty. You don't have to step down. Uh, I have a friend, his wife passed away last year and, uh, and when we went to, he put her in the boat and he had to step down, pick her manually, pick her up, and we would hold the boat against that side rail and let him put her in the boat. And she, she wore a painted, uh, life jacket. But, uh, I will burst, not today, in OSHA laws, safety, all of that. Uh, way that dock is built right now, understand that somebody said that way you won't hold a dock. That's ideal. That's ideal. But right now, scald season is coming in, you're going to have all sizes boats. And I see people coming in hitting those rails hard. You're going to have some people go under that ramp and there going to be some serious injury going under the ramp and getting in our boat. And I just ask those who have designed that to go back and look at it before people are hurt, bad, uh, possibility of lawsuits against a ci, a city. Because that is, that design is not good.
John, that was a step down on the other.
Yep.
That wasn't a ram.
But that was a rail, a rail.
That wasn't a rail. And also there was a step down. There was a step down to step to the rail. And, uh, and people put, they're going to be some serious, uh, accidents because of that.
Three, uh, three weeks ago, a few weeks ago, uh, I had a gentleman, uh, talk to me about that situation and he asked me to go to White City and take some pictures of. He, he was mostly concerned with getting, he was older sometimes, goes out by himself and, and so I took a picture of, of some ladders and railing and stuff at the White City ramp. Did pretty good. Gave it to Jim and Don and I don't know, we're just, we.
We have a lot of, we need to. No, we have the latter received that.
This one matter is not sufficient.
Yeah.
One matter is not sufficient.
Well, but that's the start.
I know that you are a boater, okay?
I know I've been a boater all my life till about two years ago.
Okay, well, I asked your son.
Yeah.
One day, I said, did he care? No, he, he's not a boater. He goss.
Yeah.
But, but anyway, guys, there, there's some hazards there, getting in and out of boat. Eli will have difficult getting in the boat. And I've both, I've both started now to October, I will be both in three to five days' work. There was a rail around the time, you don't want to come up with, not, not a step down, but that a rail. Actual rail, yes. The people used it as a step.
Well, it was a step down. It was constructed after that dock was, was first constructed, it was about a year, year or two later, I think.
John, is that something we, that we can look at and maybe get our guy that did it, maybe, I mean, I realize we're going to spend a little bit of money and just let it look at it, see what it's going to take?
Absolutely. Now, you know, saying this in mind, you know, when that dock was constructed, you know, we all knew that that dock wasn't going to fit everybody. I mean, that was no secret on that. We discussed it, we talked about it. So, you know, we lowered that entire structure, you know, six to seven inches to try compensate, you know, for that lower rail. That's the way it was, when it was built. So certainly we can look at, you know, have the marine contractor come back out and give us a price. Um, I don't know, you know, again, right now, if you go there and look, your twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight, thirty-foot boats, they have no problem. But, but about probably sixty or seventy percent of the boats are less twenty-foot than others.
I'm not disagreeing with the numbers we have.
Okay, okay. But I put in enough and, and you go down there, uh, and it's scald season, they're going to be anything from ten-foot boats. And I said, you can come in fast and go up under there, guys. Okay? I ask you to re, review that and look at it because it's a big safety hazard.
David, David, two years ago.
And also the old folks getting in and out of the boat about me, okay?
Two years ago was the second happiest day of my life. That was the time I sold my bird. John, when they built the, the ramp, it was supposed to be lowered down. Did they lower it to the height that we wanted it?
They absolutely did. So, you know, that picture is, you know, you could go down there on any good day and see it at different levels.
About a three-foot step down there and the tide, in my case, if you look in the background, you cannot even see the sand over there and your, and your tide had about eight inches more to go down.
When you can come back and see what we can do? Just throw it in. All right, anybody else? Anybody else?
One, one other thing. Okay, uh, you got another picture there, dead fish floating. And I suggest a sign be put up, no fish clinging.
I agree. One time we had certain people want us to put a fish clean table down there. I said, no, we're not going to do that. No way in the world we're going to do that. But I agree with you, maybe we need to put a sign up.
Just look at all our assets. It's a safety issue for the whole, everybody.
Exactly. All right. Commissioner Thursday, have anything?
Uh, I have a couple of things. Uh, one thing I'd like to, I'd like to welcome you, brother, uh, the board, welcome Mr. Ashbrook, the board. And I'd like to thank Mayor Magic for his seven, eight years that he gave this city. You know, I do have to agree with Mayor on one thing and we didn't always agree a lot, but I do want to thank our staff. They have great staff and I appreciate everyone here and it's their hard work. Even old Tom does good job sometimes. And that's all I got now.
Mr. Ashbrook? I would just like to thank all the citizens that got out the boat. I'm a testament to everyone, hoping it really does count. So I appreciate you and the way you're getting out there. Uh, I'm going to do my best for the city. Uh, I'm very approachable. My cell phone number is yours now. You own my phone, but I won't answer after six o'clock or return your call. But I do have to sleep. Um, I agree. Staff, awesome. Uh, went through, I think, commission boot camp the last week and, uh, got about forty pounds of reading material to go through. Uh, and in the next couple of months, I might know something. Again, thank you all for your support.
Uh, just congratulations, Mayor Hough.
Yeah, I've got one item I want to, uh, throw out and then we'll, uh, have it on the agenda for the next meeting. Uh, mayor pro temp. Now, mostly a ceremonial position and you substitute for the mayor every now and then when, when he runs out on you and the barrel cat ladies come out of the woodwork. Talk about barrel cats. That was my number one experience with, uh, substituting for the mayor. But I've been fortunate to, uh, to have the, uh, position for my, basically my seven years that I've been on here. But what I'd like to throw out for you guys to think about is, uh, and there's nothing in the charter that says anything about this. So whatever we want to do, we can, we can, uh, make a motion to, to do it. But what I'd like for you guys to think about is let's, let's rotate it every year. Uh, and, uh, you know, I'm, I think I'm group four for whatever that's worth, but group four, then the group three guy has it the next year and the group two guy has it the next year and the group one guy has it the following year. And then just continually rotate it and, uh, give everybody a little experience if they're, if they're needed in, in, uh, in running a meeting. So, uh, think about that and let's, uh, I asked Jim to, uh, put it on the agenda for the next meeting and, uh, we'll, uh, maybe make something official about it.
Any of you? Uh, the only thing I have to say tonight is, uh, I'm happy to be here. There's some naysayers, don't think I can do this job. But believe me, I started business with zero customers, zero dollars in the bank. I'm very successful in my business. So if people know that I do get a job done, you can believe I'm going to get a job done here in the city of Port St. Joe. We need jobs. I'm going to do everything in my power to make sure we get jobs here for our young people so they don't have to leave here and go other places to seek employment. I want to see that our fort, fort of Port St. Joe becomes a reality. Because that is a game changer for the whole region, not just for the city of Port St. Joe or Gulf County. And I'm going to be reaching out to elected officials in other surrounding cities, see what they can do to help us make this fort become a reality that we need it. Our water, I want to make sure we continue to work hard on our water. As Larry knows, every time we get a check, our water is clean drinking water. But do we have some problems with it? Yes, we do.